Hi, everybody. It looks like it's 6:30. So I will call to order our school committee meeting for Thursday, March 18th, 2021. So welcome. Everybody's doing well. We will start with a vote to approve the minutes for March 4th and March 11th. First, we'll start with a vote to approve minutes of March 4th, 2021. Any questions, comments? Being none, is there a motion to approve minutes of March 4th, 2021?
Carolyn, sorry, it took me half a second. There's a mistake in them. So the the last page of the minutes,
Yep.
we had, we had a motion to reconsider seconded roll call vote. We actually then have a second vote as well. It's missing from the, from the minutes.
Okay. We will add that. Thanks, Dinesh, for noticing that. So is there a motion to approve the minutes with the addition of the second roll call vote? As dated for March 4th, 2021?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Dinesh?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. A motion, or excuse me, any questions on the minutes for March 11th, 2021? Questions, comments?
No.
Seeing none? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as written for March 11th, 2021?
Still moved.
Second? All in favor? Sherry?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I'm a yes. And Kathleen?
I have to abstain.
Abstain. Thank you. Sherry Warren?
I reviewed and approved the following warrants, school expense warrants, March 4th, 2021, $464,517.30. I wish to enter them into public record.
Thanks, Sherry. We will move to Zoe and Malia, who will do a representative update. Hi, Zoe. Hi, Malia.
Hi. Malia is going to share her screen. So as we talked about last time, the administration at our high school did a survey for all the kids to answer about what they thought about coming back to school full time. We have some of the results and some specific things that kids were concerned about and what they're excited about. So here's a PowerPoint. Malia is going to start with the overall excitement of how kids are feeling.
So sorry, forgot to unmute. Um, okay. So so for general excitement, we asked on a scale of one to five, how excited the kids feel about returning to school full time? So 19.4% were at a one of not at all excited. 12% were at a two, you know, somewhat. 19.1 were right in the middle. 22.3% were somewhat excited and 27.1 were very excited out of five. So comments on excitement, we left it open for a little short answer question. So generally for pro excitement, like, yeah, we're excited. Students are excited to see friends from the opposite cohort, more contact time with teachers, especially for AP classes. The return to normalcy, which would be the, you know, resuming a routine added structure, less responsibility to manage time and the belief that they would do, they would do better with more time with their teachers. On the other side of things, the lack of excitement was because of early wake up times, puzzlement and apprehension about another big schedule or mode change with limited time left in the year. Shake up to establish routine or concerns about safety measures and adequate distance.
Some of the safety concerns, it seemed as though the majority were that they weren't that concerned, but some kids were definitely still concerned. As you can see, almost 120 kids were really concerned about coming back to school. But some are still in the middle. Next slide, Malia. So some of the concerns was that they're afraid that it's going to happen too early and that it's going to impact what happens next year or just negative trends. They're concerned about lunch because it's, but there is opportunity to be outside and more space to be eat, to eat outside. There, there's outdoor class or free time options would be helpful. They're nervous about high risk family members being exposed with less distance at school since we're moving to the three feet. They're nervous that some teachers aren't fully vaccinated, so that might not be great for some teachers. Stairways, hallways and lunch spaces are the biggest concerns because some of our stairways, yes, there's still one way, but kids do try to go side by side and it's just a lot of kids in one spot at once. But hopefully they're trying to work on some of that. The next thing we're going to talk about is for Malia.
So important considerations, we just left it to open, like, what do you believe are the most important things to consider when we do go back? So we had a lot of mixed responses here. I think at the beginning I mentioned that we had over 370 kids responding on almost every question, which was great. We got a really wide group of kids to answer this. So some of the top things I said, which is these are just the most popular ones, physical distancing in class, physical distancing in passing, distance in the cafeteria, the return to club and activity meetings, social opportunities, outdoor seating for lunch and outdoor seating for class. So the most popular thing of those would be outdoor seating for lunch, which we already have, which wouldn't be that much of a problem. And that is all the questions we have on on the return to school. There were some in live streaming, but we cut them out because we figured we're moving forward from that. So I'm going to stop sharing and if anybody has any questions, Zoe and I can answer them.
I have a question, but I just want to reiterate that I really like the student feedback aspect of what you guys are doing this year. It's, it's somewhat new to us. We haven't really gotten that in the past. It's been more kind of just a recap and I really like this format, to be honest with you.
I think for me, one of the nice things is to sort of have some data, right? I don't think that data always guides every decision, but it certainly does help in the process of making decisions and to see kind of where people are in their thought process. I think for me, one of the things that stood out was we had a meeting, I don't even know now, a month ago, three weeks ago, where we had a really strong group of people on that meeting. I think at one point there was maybe over 100 or 200 people on the call with really a big push to go back. And I think we were all pushing for that. That's always been our goal, but it is really intriguing for me to see that. And I, I'm sorry, I didn't write down the number, but I think that there was a large number of students who remain anxious and and I, when you sort of gave the little synopsis of what that means, some students sort of don't want to wake up early and don't want to sort of disrupt their, you know, the routines that they've made, but there was a subset of those that really did speak to their concern about sort of safety. And I think, oh, go ahead, Malia.
There was a large number of people who commented on, you know, a big thing I'm seeing is high risk family members. People are more worried about their family members than themselves. Their family members who aren't vaccinated, who have preexisting conditions, you know, aren't able to get vaccinated. I think that that's a big thing, which, which makes sense, you know, because I know a lot of kids aren't necessarily worried about it for themselves, but they see grandparents and they have parents who, you know, are at risk and all that stuff. So that was definitely something that I think Zoe and I saw a lot in the results, which makes a lot of sense for the apprehension.
Yeah, I think it's just something that we want to be mindful of that. You know, I think that there's plenty of people who are ready to come back, but I also think that there is a small group of people who are anxious to come. Whether that is a family sort of system or that is an individual student in the school or what, whatever it looks like. I just really want to point out, I think that your data really shows that there isn't a one size fits all, right? That we had over social media, a lot of conversations about Norton just needs to get kids back in school. And I'm really proud of the plan that Dr. Byetta and his administrative team and all of our staff and teachers really put together. So but I just want to make sure that everybody recognizes we need to be mindful, but that this is a much larger conversation, that this isn't just about those who want to come back to school. There's also a small group of students and families that are anxious about it. And, you know, as we said at our last school committee meeting, to please, you know, if you have the concern, Dr. Byetta's office would certainly work with individual families. But it's, it's definitely something that we're taking seriously. I know that there's been multiple conversations about how are we getting kids back in school? How are we going to maintain distancing? Using outside spaces much more than we have ever used outside spaces in the past. So, you know, Dr. Byetta will be talking more about sort of the update of in-person reopenings for schools later in, on our agenda. But I do think that your information is just helpful, Malia and Zoe, to kind of allow us to, to actually see that this is much bigger than a one size fits all situation. So thanks for sharing that information. Is there any other comments or questions regarding this?
I, I appreciate you, you guys kind of changing the format of how we hear things. I know the last school, I think it was the last school committee meeting, we've had so many, it's hard to keep track, but when you guys told us that the students don't feel heard, that was very concerning for me because we, we want our students to know that we do, we do want to hear what they have to say. So I agree. I think this, this type of reporting is important for us and, and very much appreciated. So thank you, guys.
I was going to suggest, first of all, thank you for sharing the data, but the other thing I was going to suggest is could we potentially have you, since it seems that your responses were pretty high, 370 responses is just shy of 50% of the students that are physically in the building in the hybrid model right now. I'm wondering if there could be a, a short, you know, again, three, four, five question that could be done maybe two or three weeks after we're in school to kind of see what, what the issues continue to be like. Some of the hallway issues, students can control themselves with that, but we're also socializing, right? It is what it is. It's, you know, we, we're doing it as adults in the office. It's hard to not go into someone's office and sit and you maintain six feet as much as possible, but you run into situations when you're not at six feet. The probably the, the biggest concern that I have is not only at the high school, but pre K to 12, is that different students are going to have, I have had different experiences in the hybrid model. Some of them have been very positive. Some of them, the families are concerned about coming back five days. And I think you spoke eloquently about the issue of bringing potentially the disease home. I think if we can maintain continuing to be vigilant about wearing masks, that continues to be a core issue. A good number of our staff have been vaccinated. I've had the first one or going for the second one or are in line. And I think the first thing is we're starting to hear about vaccinations for students. One of the vaccines is just lowered its age to 16 and doing testing with children as young as months old. So it's going to be interesting to see when you guys are able to get vaccinated and then you and your family decide that being vaccinated is the right decision. I'd love to see a, a follow up maybe for the, for the, in April. You know, a few weeks, because we, we start on the eighth and then we have vacation. So that's probably not the right time to do it. But maybe a few weeks after we're back from vacation, that would be an opportune time to do it again. Just an idea.
Definitely. I think that's something that Zoe and I are looking to do in the future is more, you know, surveys. But I think it's a good way to get kind of the qualitative data and get a lot of the responses, especially when we're, you know, when we were in cohorts, we didn't see each other. So we didn't know how the other cohort was doing, how different people were feeling about it. So I think that especially for something like when we do go back, this would be an interesting way to get that data. So I think if Zoe has anything to add, I think that that's a really good point.
Yeah, I just wanted to say this survey was not completely created by Malia and I. It was through our administration. We're just kind of the voices that are telling you about it, but we're excited to, for next meeting to see how the elementary schools are doing with going back. So hopefully we'll get some information from then next time.
That was actually my question. So that survey was just for the high school, but has there been a survey of the elementaries or is that coming up?
That was just for the high schools because it was kind of what's accessible to us right now. Me and Zoe worked with Mr. Dolman to write the survey and create the questions based on our experiences and kind of how we felt like what we need to assess in the high school. It's a little bit harder to survey the younger kids because, you know, they're not as good about knowing exactly what's wrong and kind of saying, oh, on a scale of one to five, how do they feel? Like they don't, you know, they're not as in touch with that, I think. So I think we're going to look into a different way of kind of coming in contact with them. I know something we talked about on student council was possibly doing Google meets with a couple of students from the younger schools and trying to get some input from them. But that's from the high school right now. I could try and probably look in the next time, getting some from the elementary schools too, if you guys want to see that also.
Oh, if I can just interject, I know that Jen O'Neil, Lieutenant's on the call. We do have a pretty good survey that talks about the social emotional with students that would, could be something that we could share with the two of you. So you could just take a look at it, but we could absolutely do that a few weeks upon returning to school with the elementary students. It's, it's, it can be made as long as we want. It can be 30 questions or it can be five questions and it uses basic language, grade level language and all of that, that potentially could help to support how students are, you know, in terms of their social emotional, how they're feeling about being back in school. And it could actually give us some really good data, including that we can collect that data by individual student. I'm not sure that I would hear, but it would give us some cohorts of information that could then be shared with staff and trying to support kids, especially if you see like a, you know, a certain grade level where there's more issues than another grade level or school. I don't know, Jen, if you wanted to just mention that.
Sure. So, um, Vinnie and I actually spoke about this earlier today. So it's funny that it's coming up at tonight. We had a conversation about administering the Panorama SEL survey to all students in grades three through 12, about a week or two after their return. And we wanted to give the students a little bit of time to come back and settle back into a new routine before giving them the survey. The reason we do grades three through 12 is that what it's, that's what's offered through Panorama in terms of students self-reporting around their own SEL. They, we do actually have a teacher rating scale that we can use for students in pre K to two. We actually did that last fall for the first time and it was interesting because it gave us a good starting point for those young students to see, were there things that were coming up in the classrooms that perhaps, you know, our, our teams could sit down and have a conversation about. So as Dr. Byetta mentioned, it is individual to the, each student pre K to 12, and we use that along with academic data, behavioral data, attendance data to really look at the whole child and, and see how we can support individual students. So it's definitely something that we're talking about. Malia and Zoe, thank you so much for sharing. I know that Mr. Dolman, you know, really wanted to get your input in regards to the questions and making sure we got it out to our high school students. So kudos to you guys. Thanks.
Well, here and Zoe, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I think we're all good if that's.
You have that?
Yeah, I think that's, we're all good. Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you. I know that this has been a lot of work. Maybe at some point we sort of, we're talking about the, the lower grades, but I think this would also be a, a nice opportunity for the middle schoolers to also, you know, really think about coming back. I do think it'll be really interesting to see how this kind of coming back together, the sort of cohorts coming together will, will sort of work. I mean, I think we know that it will work, but it's definitely going to be a little bit like a start of a new year transition. Having all students in the classroom at the same time, knowing that they were all receiving the same kind of information in their classes, but to really sort of get a sense of where students are at and how teachers will navigate that. So we really do. I can speak for myself. I do recognize that the transition is maybe going to be a little bit of a tricky one, but I do have faith that everybody will kind of be very successful with it. So thanks to all of our students and to all of our teachers and staff. I, I really am looking forward to a, a smooth transition, getting back together. So Malia and Zoe, thanks for your input and for sharing that information. We will move. Chief Clark, I'll open the floor to you to do a review of the SRO memorandum of understanding. Last, at our last meeting, we had had a discussion about this, but we were really hoping that perhaps you could give us some insight, your thoughts on sort of what has been shared with us and helping us kind of consider options for moving forward.
Sure. Good evening. Before I get started, I was actually out at the football field around five o'clock talking to the football team, myself and Deputy Peterson about Sergeant Defossis, who passed away recently. And I just want to share my appreciation with you for the football team and their support and they're, they're wearing, they're going to be wearing remembered stickers for Sergeant Defossis. It's really a classy thing to do and I really appreciate that. So thank you. So under, as you know, there was a, a large police reform bill that was passed in December. And it basically covers the acts of 2020 under chapter 253. And one of the sections deals with school resource office. You know, really, there's really three main points to what we need to change in the MOU. And it's, it's, you know, kind of sad in a sense because it's, it's what we're addressing, we really don't do. And I think when the bill was passed, it really, it really was meant, this particular section, I think, was meant for the inner cities. And it, it became out to affect, you know, every community in Massachusetts. You know, there's three, basically three things that, that occur here in the, in this MOU that we have to change per the legislation. One is that we basically can't give any, any gang affiliation to any gang databases, including the Fusion Center, the, the BRIC, which is a Boston affiliation. Anything that analyzes that type of data, we can't do and we don't do it. We haven't done it. We've never done it. So the other thing is that it needs to be outlined that, you know, we, we as the police department aren't just putting a police officer in the school without permission from the superintendent. And again, that is not something that we've never done. I think, you know, I don't want to speak for Joe, but I think, I think I, me and Joe have a pretty good working relationship. And I think, you know, even amongst the school committee, I mean, I think if anybody has any questions or anything, we're always available. And we bounce ideas off of each other, me and Joe. And, you know, this is even before Joe, you know, I think we had a good relationship with the schools. Joe's just, just added to it. So a lot of this that's in the, the MOU is just basically talking about, about that relationship that we're going to be establishing policies and procedures that really just outline certain, certain aspects. I did put some policies together, a policy together for our offices, in particular SRO offices, and I will share that with Joe. It's actually a lot along the lines of our old MOU that really just dictated on how somebody is selected, who, how the chain of command works, who the officer reports to in the schools, what they can and can't do, which is really in an old MOU we, we had. And the third phase of this is it's not over yet. There will be a commission established after July 1st. And no later than February 1st of 2022, this is, this commission will establish a model MOU. So we will be revisiting this at some point between July 1st and February 1st of 2022. I think, you know, one of the reasons that this was really put in the police reform is I think some in the inner cities in particular think that there's a school to jail pump pipeline that, you know, students are getting arrested in, in schools and, you know, it's just, they're going to jail and that's where they're staying. I can't think, we had this conversation a couple of weeks ago. I can't think of one time where there has been a student that has actually been arrested in the school. There may be one. I can't, I can't think of any. You know, there are criminal charges here and there that, that happened, but you know, to take somebody from, from the school and, and arrest them and put them in the, into a jail setting, it, it just doesn't happen. It's actually the complete opposite. We do a lot more with diverting youth than anything else. So there's a, there's probably about 20 action items that we have to take as a police department regarding the police reform. And this is really just one of them. So I can answer any questions. It's just could be kind of a big overview of what we're dealing with.
I really appreciate you taking time to come and, and kind of share that insight. I think, you know, when we're reading it on paper, it, it is, you know, we can read it, but it's nice to kind of get your input and your understanding. And really I, I do want to sort of say how appreciative we have always been. Our SROs are just amazing. And I think the relationship, sort of the collaborative relationship between Norton Police and Norton Schools is pretty significant and amazing. So we wanted to, you know, personally, I wanted to make sure that there wouldn't be sort of a huge change, something that really would sort of perhaps change the dynamic of that relationship. Because I think what we do see is exactly what you mentioned. It's more about sort of getting kids on the right track, keeping kids on the right track, really sort of, I think in a lot of ways, really supporting children as they're developing through the school system. So I'm not sure if anybody has any questions or comments.
I'd cheer through you to the chief. Chief, thanks for coming tonight as always. And, and thank you for the kind words and, and right back at you. I think it's a fantastic working relationship where we count on each other to, to do good things for kids and the offices that you have in our schools. To be quite honest, getting my permission is the, the least important thing that I need because they're both just fantastic. I don't know if anybody's been on Twitter with Officer Rover Shaw doing some Irish dancing with elementary kids this week, but just these, these guys, these professionals understand kids. And I think you're right that at least in my tenure, we're not arresting kids, we're supporting kids and Sergeant Dennett in particular, because of the high school has been tremendous with making sure that students who do have some issues are actually being supported by not going in front of, you know, sentencing and so on, but having a collaborative effort with parents or guardians to get the counsel and get the support. You know, just the other day, I, I really do believe this through the work of our SROs, both of them actually in two different ways. You know, we, we're getting, I believe sincere letters from students who made a mistake and apologizing for their mistake. And I don't think they're just doing because somebody told them to. I really do think that there's been a real discussion about doing the right thing. And those letters are always, you know, in education, our job is to, is to educate and, you know, I think it's a great thing. I think one of the concerns that I have, chief, and maybe it's something we can talk a little bit more later. So we don't take up more of your time is the issue of the model language for the, for the MOU. There's going to be a push by the Superintendent's Association that unlike the law, that the model has to have flexibility depending on communities. So very much to the issues that we deal with aren't the same issues that happen in other, in another communities. And we, we, we can look at rural, urban and suburban, and we all know that we have the same issues. Sometimes it's just we have less of them. But there's also core issues that take place in some communities that don't happen in communities like Norton, not to say that it couldn't, but typically they're, they're not. So our push as superintendents is, is to ask the commission that's doing this to to not put a one, one shoe fits all mentality like the law has been written so that the practice, the law is the law, but the practice of the law is actually left up to local police chiefs, SROs and the superintendent of schools. So thanks again. Appreciate it.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
It does require a vote.
Okay. So seeing none, is there a motion to approve the SRO memorandum of understanding as written?
So moved.
Second?
I'm sorry, Carolyn, can I, can I ask Chief Clark just a very quick yes or no question? So chief, you, you would be okay with this then? You, you would be fine with this MOU as, as written?
It really doesn't have any effect on us, you know, the way
It really doesn't have any effect on us, you know, the way we do business right now. So I, I don't have a problem with it. Yes.
Okay. In that case, I will second the motion.
Great. All in favor, let's see. Kathleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dinesh?
I think Dinesh is frozen.
I think he's frozen. I didn't know if I was frozen or if he's frozen.
I had a good shot of him though. Took a bad picture of him.
I am yes as well. It usually is me who freezes on the screen. So I'm feeling really lucky that it's not me right now. Maybe we can come back to this vote. Would that be okay? Because it looks like Dinesh is not able to.
You can, since you haven't finished your vote, you can, I believe the process would be that you can accept the vote as a four zero zero. And then come back and do what we did the other day, unless he's on now. Let's see if you give him another second, he might be back.
Okay.
Not, we could do what we did the other day and make sure that.
And then just.
Right. Yeah. Vote to reconsider and then go from there.
Okay. Why don't we do that? And we will.
So the pass is four zero zero and then you can come back and do what we did last time.
Okay. So we actually have two votes coming up. So I do know Dr. Beata that we need to vote on them separately, but I'm wondering if you could just sort of kind of give us an overview for both. And then we can just vote on them separately to appoint superintendent to the Board of Directors of REEDS. And also to the Board of Directors of By County Collaborative.
Right. So Norton Public Schools is a partner with both the REEDS Collaborative, where we have the opportunity to have students partake in the REEDS program as well as the Byco Collaborative. They are really our two main state public collaborators. We do business with others, but we're not necessarily members of others. We're, excuse me, members of these two. And so the Acts of DESI, other regulations at DESI require that the school committee may be a member if the bylaws of the collaborative specify either school committee member or the superintendent. Then there's the other option, which is that you could actually decide that you want to do it and not give it to the superintendent. So both of these are, the first one is pursuant to chapter 40, section 4E, as amended by the chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012. Members of the Board of Directors at REEDS Collaborative to be appointed annually. So the, the motion, and I'll read it for you, and you can just have someone second it, is that Joseph Bay has appointed to serve as the Norton Public Schools representative on the Board of Directors of REEDS Collaborative in accordance with Mass General Laws, chapter 40, section 4E, as amended by the chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012 for the 2021-22 school year. And you just need somebody to motion that in a second.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Let's see, Kathleen?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dinesh, we were voting to approve Dr. Beata to the Board of Directors of REEDS.
I'm against it. I vote yes. I didn't hear what the topic was. I still voted yes. Now it's a pro forma vote and I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Yes. And I also am a yes vote.
Thank you. Yeah. The next one is the Board of Directors of By County. And the language exactly, I'll enter into the record. Following the specific language right into the minutes for the By County Collaborative Board Member pursuant to chapter 40, section 4E, as amended by chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012, members of the Board of Directors of By County Collaborative to be appointed annually. Joseph Bay is appointed to serve as the Norton Public Schools representative on the Board of Directors of By County Collaborative in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, chapter 40, section 4E, as amended by chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012 for the 2021-22 school year.
Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor. Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you for doing that, Dr. Beata. So we are going to, can we reconsider the SRO memorandum? Or do we have to wait till the end of the meeting?
I'm assuming it passed.
It did.
Yeah, we don't need to reconsider it and that's fine. It's.
Um. So we will then just move on to the vote to approve the contract memorandum of agreement with Custodian Grounds Union for 2021-2022.
Madam Chair, through you to the rest of the committee and the public, this memorandum of agreement is entered into by the town of Norton School Committee and of the American Federation of State, State, County and Municipal Employees Council 93, Local 1702, Custodian slash Grounds Union. Whereas the committee and the union are parties to a collective bargaining agreement for the period of July 1st, 2018, and including June 30th, 2021. And whereas the committee and the union have been and negotiated the terms, the following agreement is for the period of July 1st, 2021, and to end, including June 30th, 2022. Therefore, it's a one-year addition to their current contract. The term of the contract for that one year is an increase in longevity as written of $200, a salary increase of $1.50, a realignment of the head grounds position as part of the senior custodial position. And the, the holiday, floating holiday between the, the time of the agreement and June 30th, 2021 this year for, because they're 12-month employees and part of their current contracts. And as it reads that, they also receive, receive the new state holiday, June 19th, which is June 19th going forward. This is very specific to this contract. Not all contracts of this are written the same, as you know, but it's very specific to, to this one, which would make the total paid holidays 14 days. And they have ratified the contract. So it requires.
Any questions or comments?
I just want to thank the work of Matt Wells and Wade Lazard in the background as they always are, you know, getting these things done. And specifically the union reps that came to the table to get this done. Literally, it was one physical meeting followed by email exchanges or conversations. And that's how it came about. It's a good contract for both sides. These men and women have done tremendous job, especially during COVID. They did not request at any time to be paid extra during COVID, as many other typical labor unions have done, if you will. And I think it's a fair contract for this one year.
I agree. I also can sort of echo the, the big thank yous for both Wade and, and certainly for our team who work really hard in our schools. So I really appreciate all of the hard work on both sides. Not sure if there's any comments, questions?
I would, I would just echo the quick thank you. I mean, you can't say thank you enough to these guys. So thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
When you take your motion, I would ask for the pace, for the, for the purposes of making it easier for the committee, that your vote is to ratify and support, and that the superintendent will sign on your behalf.
To ratify and support allowing superintendent to sign on our behalf?
Correct.
Is there a motion to approve? To ratify and approve the contract memorandum of agreement with the Custodian Grounds Union for school year 2021-2022, allowing Dr. Beata to sign on behalf of the school committee? Did that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Kathleen?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes, thank you.
Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thanks, everybody. Glad we were able to.
Enter into the record, I have signed the contract. It'll be forwarded to them. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
We will move it to Jen, review and vote of the 2021-2022 school calendar.
Hi, everybody. I'm just going to share my screen really quickly. All right. So we, this is our second viewing of the school calendar. Can you guys see the calendar?
Yes.
Okay. And we have made a couple of changes since you saw it the last time. Just to note, the beginning of the school year still starts with staff returning before Labor Day for Welcome Back Day and Professional Development. And then students starting grades one through 12 on the seventh, which is the day after Labor Day. What we did change was December 23rd, it's a Thursday. We actually created that to be a half day for staff and students to let them out a little bit earlier before that winter break. And the only other change is in June. June 20th is a, is the Juneteenth observed holiday. June 19th is actually the date, but we would observe it on the Monday. So currently, right now, without any snow days, we are scheduled to get out on Thursday the 16th. So that may not impact the actual school schedule, but it's important for us to have on there just to make sure if we have a few snow days that we're keeping that in mind.
So potentially Jen, just for clarification, if we did have snow days and needed to extend into that week of June 20th, that, that Monday would be a holiday.
Correct.
So that sort of, we traditionally build in five days. Is that correct?
Yes, we're required by statute to build in the five extra days.
Which would bring us to the 24th. And that's the reason why it might look like there's actually six days, but that is the observed holiday. So.
Yeah, that is correct. So I'm happy to answer any other questions. This does require a vote. And it's funny because we've been getting a lot of questions from families about when students are coming back in the fall. I think people are hoping to maybe get away this summer.
I wish I saw like a day off in March. I have to be honest. March is such a long, you knew I was going to say that, you know, I just, I just, March is that long month with nothing in there. So.
So we do have that.
Yeah.
You know, one thing that I think anyone that's been around for a while knows that one of the things that Joe and I would really like to see is an extra professional development day. So, you know, it's really nice to have that PD day at the beginning of the year with our staff because we unload so much. But, you know, if we were able to have that extra day, we would definitely put it into that March break. But.
I totally understand. I was just sort of, that, that is just a long month.
It is.
Does anybody have any other questions, any comments?
Just really quickly, Jen, we're starting on the 7th of September?
I believe so. Hold on, let me go back up. Sorry about that.
Yes. Is that, is, is that not a holiday?
The 6th is the holiday.
No, I feel like the 7th should be too, just saying.
Labor Day is the 6th. So in, you know, way back in the day, we used to have that Tuesday was our Welcome Back Day for staff and students.
I just feel like the 7th should be a holiday. That's all I'm saying. Seems like it's a really special day in the world.
It's Dinesh's birthday, everybody.
Well, you can enjoy your day while your children are at school.
Well, I could. Thank you for that thought. That's.
You can celebrate on the 4th with me.
Jen, maybe you could put it on the calendar, just list that it's, you know, birthday.
Perfect. Dan, you have a big one this year, don't you?
No, I have the big one left here.
It looks like, Dinesh, you share a birthday with Michelle Fucci, so.
Nice. It definitely should be a holiday. Let's go.
Exactly. It should be a holiday. So Jen, thanks for all of your work on that.
Absolutely.
I don't have any other questions, any other questions, comments? None. Is there a motion to approve the school calendar for the 2021-2022 academic year as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
I'm a yes. And I think that Kathleen has lost service, so. We will, she will rejoin us, but we will do the vote just for Dr. Beata.
Zero?
Four zero, please. And Dr. Beata, update on in-person reopening of schools?
Thank you. So by now, the community at large should know that we did make that final decision and added another day. But I just want to review for the public that Monday, March 22nd, that this coming Monday is a professional development day, day 182 for the teacher's contract and parent's contract. And they're on there. That's all, there's no school for all students on the 22nd. The 23rd, we go back to DLA, we go back to hybrid and six to 12. And we return full in person in grades pre-K through five. Pre-K's been coming in, but just for the sake of being clear, pre-K through five in all three of our elementary schools. On Monday, the 29th, grades six to eight will return. And as announced earlier this week, on April 8th, grades nine through 12 will return as well. So as of the 29th, pre-K through through eight would either be a DLA option that students are in or their fullback return. And only grades nine through 12 from the 29th until their date of return on the 8th would be in the hybrid or DLA. After that, the only option that's available would be the students that are in the DLA or the full in person. I want to make it very clear that without the Norton Teachers Association, both the teachers and the parent professionals that have been working on this, the Labor Management Committee, the now five working groups that are taking place within the schools, the work of the central office, you know, we wouldn't be where we are. We feel that we're in a good place. Our K9 and 95 masks are going out to teachers for those who want to utilize it. Each of the schools is preparing their own Welcome Back, if you will, process. As you know, I filed the general one to the public this week. I would expect, if you're a parent, changes. One of the things that happens with going to less than six feet is the same thing that happens at six feet, which is the, the contact tracing, except now if you're at four feet or five and a half feet or three feet or three and a half feet, there's more bodies that potentially could be quarantining. We will continue to prioritize safety in terms of the daily data. Our dashboard is, is up and provided to the public and to our teaching staff who choose to go there. I email the school committee every day with an update, as well as the central administrator, central office administrators and the teach, the principals in each of their buildings know their numbers as well. I will also begin a weekly update on Fridays via email to families at 6:00 PM. Every Friday, there'll be a release of a very simple, what's the weeks look like? What are the core issues? Are we seeing anything in terms of the data or any other critical matters that need to be addressed? Those will be released via the Communications Office at 6:00 PM on Fridays. Basically, they'll probably be completed by four o'clock in the afternoon when all the data is in, if you will. We will also begin a standard email on Sunday nights at 6:00 PM if needed. Again, Friday nights will be a summation of the week. Sunday would be anything that we know about from the weekend that could cause a significant number of students to have to be quarantined. And we would want to share that information with, with, with the, the family so that they have the data and we don't have the rumors taking place. So Sundays would be if needed. And of course, we'll utilize the social media, the Norton Public Schools, my Twitter account, the Facebook. And, and of course, parents can always utilize the Let's Talk to reach out to us as well. So that's the general update about that. I want to thank Wade Lazard and the principals, Jen O'Neil, for a lot of background work on getting desks and, and making sure that these things are published and getting them all out and all of that. But every administrator has had a different role in, in this, in this rollout, right? Some of it is just making sure that we have computers in every hand and making sure that we have, you know, the, the, the connection boxes in the classroom so that, you know, the, the one-to-one devices are being hooked up and all of that stuff. And then we have 500 desks that were put together. I actually helped on that. It was kind of fun. Putting together new desks and, and cracking a few jokes with my friend Fred. And and just really, just, just the excitement. We had a parent meeting this week. I tried to sell bus passes for practically free. You know, you know, we're, we're selling bus passes for the rest of the year for $52, which is a great price for the remainder of the school year. Matt reminded everybody that lunches are free in our schools. But if you want to get the benefits of the sports offset and the transportation offsets, you need to do the free and reduce paperwork. And then. And then lastly, Karen would remind me, or I'd be dumb not to remind everyone about we're a one-to-one district. You know, we have every kid with, with technology and we hope that we're able to to continue to provide all of those things moving forward. So we have, I think, an exciting few months. I know it's an anxious few months as well, as people are getting finally their vaccinations. But I think, I think it's time. It's been over a year since our students have been together with our staff in, without cohorts. And so I'll be sending out a message tomorrow to the staff that talks a little bit about, you know, the ability to create the teams, if you will. You know, these are, these have been two cohorts. They're now coming together, having activities that are really about that. Activities within the classroom that allow for them to get to know each other more, to figure out who really is anxious about being in school, as was reported out earlier by our students, and who is really, it's, it's okay, and how they can help each other. That should really be our, our first few weeks of school, you know. One of the great things about, about education is that it's always exciting every September, and I kind of feel like there's a little bit of excitement in the air starting next week and then as each of the schools. And that excitement is different because of age groups. It just is, it is what it is. The administrators and central office will be out and about at all schools starting this week. I will be at the LGN on Monday morning for the start of school, then the HAY, then the JCS. And I know a number of my administrators will be with me just to really support the staff and the administration at each of the buildings with welcoming students back. There will be glitches. So flexibility, flexibility, and as Sheri always reminds us, kindness will probably get us to the finish line so that we can really make sure that, that kids are feeling comfortable and so are our staff. And it's really important because without our staff, as I keep saying over and over again, we really can't do much. So supporting them is something that we have to do. I've been very flexible about teachers having to leave and, and get their vaccinations and all of that. We will continue to support that. I want to thank Champions for their flexibility, continuing to support our teachers and our families, but also as of today, I can, I can tell you that we have a couple of Champions personnel that will be working for Norton Public Schools from nine to one every day. That's a huge support for us. And then, really, at the end of the day, all hands on deck. At any point, I could be teaching first grade. You never know with this stuff. It probably won't be a good day for the kids, but I'm gonna try my best if that's what has to happen. But we're gonna try to get this done the right way, and we just need people to understand that it's, it's gonna have a lot of hiccups and glitches and, but we're back. So I'll leave it at that.
Well, I want to certainly thank everybody. I think every member of Norton Public Schools has really put in so much effort to make this happen. And on behalf of myself, as the chairperson of the school committee, I'm really so appreciative and really just, it was a huge undertaking. And the fact, I don't know, Joe, if you have numbers, but sort of doing a little bit of my own research and having conversations with you and others. I think once again Norton has proven themselves as a leader that we are headed back to sort of full-time for our students before many of our sort of neighboring communities are. So, you know, I, I just want to thank everybody who really participated in this process, who, who made it happen. So I do want to say it does feel like a little excitement, but at the same time, I do recognize and I would love to ask everybody for patience. I am a parent who does pick up at the high school and it's busy leaving the high school in a hybrid model. So I don't know how we're gonna get out of that high school parking lot when everybody is back. It's sort of like funny, like I'm just, you know, I leave the high school and I'm like, gosh, there's so many cars and it's so busy. So thinking about adding sort of that second cohort to, to leaving school, I'm sure we're gonna have a little bit of a longer wait to get out. So I am asking everybody to just be patient, that it is going to be a huge change. You know, there will be tweaks along the way, right? We know that. There always is. So but the fact that our, our kids can be back in school is pretty exciting and definitely, I also want to say thank you. I, I do know that there will be students who struggle with being back at school full-time with their own levels of sort of anxiousness around whether it's social distancing or kind of academic responsibility, whatever it is. So I really do know that our staff is ready to support those students as well. And I, I want to sort of do a thank you in advance to really support any student who needs it. So is there any other questions or comments? Being none. We can move on. Dr. Baeta, is there any additional business?
Just three quick ones. I'm gonna share with you that right now we have on the date, on this, on the schedule for April, we have three scheduled meetings. I'm not sure that we need the April first meeting. I would keep the fifteenth and twenty-ninth only because I'll be able to have some more specific updates for you about where we are. And we'll have all our schools back and so on and so forth. So we can leave it posted just in case something comes up and then just cancel it later. You don't need to do a vote. We can, we can just do that, that the meeting's been postponed. But I just wanted to be aware that that's gonna probably be what we do, is we wouldn't be there till the fifteenth of, of April unless we really have to do something on April first.
Great.
Okay. Who is?
Hey, Joe. Can we get, can we get an updated calendar of the list sent out to us, the meeting sent out? I'm, I'm, I'm actually starting to lose track of when we're supposed to meet and not meet, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Updated list.
Update a school committee calendar for the remainder of the year.
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Okay. Will do. I also wanted to inform the committee of the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, or the A R P E S S E R. Okay, everybody say it after me. The Massachusetts total is going to be one point eight billion dollars, of which one point six billion dollars must go directly to schools. And no more than ten percent can stay at the state level or approximately one hundred and eighty-three million dollars. And only nine point one million of it at any point by the state can be used for administering of the grant in general. Twenty percent of whatever total we receive must go towards learning loss, SCL, and academics via ideas of summer school, extension of the school year, et cetera, et cetera. Creativity is going to be something they're gonna be looking at, and the remaining eighty percent can be used for everything from IDEA and special education to vocational technical education and so on and so forth. The, the other part is that the regular reporting will be required, unfortunately, from that because that'll probably be quite the paper trail. I can't wait to see those end of the year reports. We do not have any specific numbers per school at this point. There's a lot of information out there, as I think Dines heard the other night at the FinCom about we're getting twenty-five hundred dollars per student, we're getting five thousand. It'd be inaccurate to announce those numbers because it's based on the Title I formula, which is one hundred percent based on our students' populations within that. And as you know, we're not, we're not a huge district when it comes to that. So you're gonna see districts getting potentially tens of millions of dollars and other districts getting five hundred thousand or a million or two million. So, you know, we're gonna be, of course, on the lower end, not on the higher end, but it is what it is. The funds do have to be currently expended through twenty twenty-three, but there's already talk that that's gonna be extended just because there's so much money available. And then lastly, the Permanent Building Committee, myself, Sheri, and members of the Permanent Building Committee and the town manager will be participating starting every Tuesday, the twenty-third, the thirtieth, and the sixth of April at seven PM. We will be doing a live Zoom meeting presenting the three projects and information and doing a Q and A. So just wanted to provide you with that, and we will not, if it's all right with you, Madam Chair, go into executive session tonight because I cannot find some of my notes I was supposed to share with you, number one. But number two, Jen just reminded me that I don't think we have a link for the executive session. So we will make sure that we have one at our next meeting, which actually is better for us because I have an upcoming meeting with a couple of the unions on contracts that would allow for me to go into executive session and bring you up to date.
I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
So is there any other comments, any other business?
Carolyn, if I could take a quick moment, I'm trying to be brief here. I just want to recognize, I, I read in the, I can't remember if it was in the paper or Twitter the other day, but Marty Gagan at the Yell is being recognized, and I apologize upfront if I'm, if I'm not getting this correct because I'm saying it completely from memory from about three days ago. But he's being recognized as the Boston Marathon Jimmy Fund Walker of the Year or, or something like that. I, I believe he helped raise over thirty-seven thousand dollars either in the last year or, or a couple of years. But it's just wanted to thank him for that. It reflects well on not only him, but on our community as a whole. Great accomplishment for him and really nice to see him recognized like that. He's, he's a good guy and he deserves it. So thank you to him.
Thank you for recognizing that, Dines.
Well said.
Any other comments, any other business? Questions? Being none. I would like to have a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting of Thursday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor, Dines?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So thanks, everybody. Have a great rest of your week, and we're off and running next week.
Have a great night.
Take care, everybody.
Good night, guys.
Good night.